It is seven oh two, I'm gonna call the meeting for selectmen's order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. I will recognize the deputy first selectman to lead us in the.
I would be used to the United States of America. The to the Republic, which is one nation.
Okay, I do have a couple of additions or rather changes to be attended tonight. I just want to find them. First and foremost, I'd like to add. Under new appointments, seven C. One through four, the appointment of the of memberships to BMX skate park committee. That would be Brenda Crockett, Dave Crockett, Rebecca Crockett, and Laurie Gabriel, all for terms ending on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And then also agenda item nine I, which is discussion of the draft citing council letter regarding solar developments in town this winter. Have a motion to add those items, please. So move. Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And also ask that we unstar agenda item eight A, South Road ownership option update. I do have a little bit of new information and it's been a little while since we provided anything publicly, so I wanted to share that. But I have a promotion to unstar agenda item eight A.
Go ahead, maybe some second.
Made and seconded, any discussions? All in favor, aye, opposed, okay. Tonight's attendance for selectmen present, selectman Baker has reached out and let me know that he has a work emergency that came up last minute. He he will be here if he is able. If not, then we certainly have to stand. We don't have minutes to approve tonight, thanks, still working on, it was a rather robust discussion last time, so we'll tackle those at our next meeting. Public participation, so we have some folks online and we have some people here present. I'm gonna, as I have done the last few meetings, I'm gonna start by asking if there's anybody here present who would like to address the order select.
Do I need to?
You you do not need to, you may, and there's another opportunity later if you'd like. Is there anybody online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Please unmute yourself, identify yourself with your name and address. Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting for members present and attending virtually to address the board. Later in the years. Warden commission resignations and appointments, we do have one. We have resignation of Bob Maynard as a member of the economic development commission. I have a motion.
I'm moved to accept the resignation of Robert Maynard from the Economic Development Commission with regret.
There a second? Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, we're gonna move on to agenda items seven C, one through four, appointment to the BMX skate park committee. I'd ask that we postpone that, actually that we table that until we've actually reconstituted the committee after nine B.
Move to table agenda item C, one through four, until we've discussed agenda item nine B.
Is there a second? All in favor, aye, opposed? Well, what we just did there is we need to reformulate the BMX committee and then we can appoint people to it. We can appoint people to something that hasn't yet been, so bear with us just a little bit.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, South Road. But as you folks will recall, we have cleared the legislative hurdles that needed to be cleared up on that in terms of the the low income restrictions on the property. Next up that we are working on is figuring out what. What variances in total need to be approved or requested of the zoning board of appeals by the town because we were the property owner. And whether we need to ask for one set of variances or sixteen sets of variances because there's gonna be a subdivision of the property. So professional staff and town council are working on developing that. There's gonna be an informal discussion of the course of action with the zoning board of appeals at their October meeting. And submission for a public hearing at the zoning board of appeals for their November meeting. So within the next six, six weeks or so, we should have the zoning components of what needs to be accomplished with the discharge of that property. Review, examine, and resolve. I want to point out and and just remind folks that this is. A longstanding pre-existing issue that we inherited. It's important that we take our time in unraveling that so that we don't leave the property owners in a position or subsequent property owners in a position. Where questions can be drawn as to the proper chain of title down the road. So we're working to resolve this as quickly as we can, I think we're making actually really good progress and I'm hoping that. The next step that we completed in the next six weeks or so. So I just wanted to give you guys an update as to where that stands. Next up is an update from George Kripke on the Eraser. Good evening, Mr. Kripke, how are you?
Good evening, I'm well, you? Pleasure to be here. I'm pleased to report that the field work on the grant project is completed. And. If you recall, there were ten. Particular items left, some were dealing with questions from the board. Some were just a lack of information that I had at that time and I expressed the hope that I would have it all done and in fact it is all done. So. I would just report to you that the first item is Boyer Properties, there was a question about whether they were still in business. I spoke with Laura at Boyer Properties on nine seven and she confirmed that they were very much still in business. The next item was driver, that item was a recommendation for ten thousand dollars. And all of these that I'm gonna point to tonight, except for one, are for ten thousand dollars. The second one is Driver's Depot. They were the last one to be completed and it was after I drove there and found the gentleman and personally interviewed him. East Windsor Historical Society submitted the info and they're recommended. Greater Windsor Educators Agency submitted the information required and they are recommended. Hartford Toner and Cartridges, I spoke with Kathy Collins on nine seven and she confirmed that they were still in business at that address. Here in East Windsor. KTI submitted information and they're recommended, as did Roberto's Real American Tavern. There were questions about two businesses, Tile Concepts and Tile Concepts Plus. And they submitted tax information showing that they were operating out of the town. And the last item, River Valley Row Works, they're recommended for forty-five hundred dollars. I spoke with Keith, Keith Jageloff on the eighth. And he confirmed the fields are in Broadbrook and he followed it up. With an email and I'm quoting them, I'm just putting in this email what I told you by phone. All of the hemp operations, including cultivation and processing, are taking place in Broadbrook. So. That. Final trench. Represents ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. And with the previous. Tranche of money that you had already passed of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars. Brings the final total to one million sixty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars in grants distributed. Or to be distributed. If my recommendation is is voted on to the small businesses and. The nonprofits in the town of East Windsor. And I would like to note that. Without having really known your town before I spent this much time here. I can't help but notice as I drive through the town. That these hundred and twelve entities that are receiving grants are sprinkled throughout the town. Businesses and names and signs on buildings that meant nothing to me before the project, just jump out at me right now. So it's very clear that you've covered the town. And I think it's it's a remarkable project and a fascinating. Bit of economics. And I thank you for the opportunity, the next step from here is to do a final report. Which I believe the first selectman has asked me to do by October.
Twenty first.
Twenty first. And I'd be delighted to answer any questions you have.
I don't have a question, I just wanna thank you for taking the extra time and go on and take a relook at the problem, what was that, we had questions on, so.
My pleasure.
I'd rather be. Up to date on the right information than to make a decision on something and have a question.
Yep, makes perfect sense.
Other questions or comments? So we have George's recommendations in front of us and I would echo Maureen's comments, George, you did do your own work on this. We're not done yet, but in terms of getting money out the door, we've we've done our due diligence or you've done our due diligence to make sure that. In compliance with what the law recommends. Could I have a a motion to accept the recommendations of Mr. Kripke and fund those ten properties at the recommended level?
I'd move to approve the recommendations of Mr. Kripke and approve those ten entities that, was it ninety-four thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Oh, it's been seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? So we so far, I'm I'm sorry to be kind of distracted and hold up the the working document. We have so far received back the necessary documentation from forty-six. Awardees, so by the by Monday, those checks will be out. I don't know how much that totals because I could do that on my computer in my office, but not here. That is still. A third of the total awardees that that we're gonna be doing, that's that's a good, good, quick chunk. Our target was to have this done by Labor Day, we had the initial, most of the initial awards done by Labor Day, so I'm considering that, you know. Goal accomplished. The next steps, so George and I spoke earlier today with Lily Bluestein, who's been working with us on this project. She's a young lady who's also working with the Greater Hartford Foundation. We're gonna, between the three of us, we're gonna create an analysis and termination report of what exactly this money did. So that the general public can see. Who was impacted, what sectors received the money, what, you know, where the need was across the community. And I I'm looking forward to sharing that with you folks since we get it written. We talked a bit about what that will entail, we're gonna do a methodology for how the program was developed and administered. We're gonna do an analysis of the awards and the findings, there's gonna be an executive summary and then there's going to be the the full final report of. George's work in terms of his hundred and fifteen reviews. The other thing we need to do is the rejection letters for the the five or six folks who didn't get it. You can sign those. So, project comes coming right along and and in short order, we'll have this wrapped up. George, you really have killed it and I have recommended you to other towns to do the same if they decide to do so, so hopefully this is a model that can be amended in another.
Well, even if I'm not the one doing it, it's certainly a model to, you know, it's 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 a pleasure to see government recognize that funds often are better served in the hands. Of the people that are directly using it rather than thinking that government always has all the answers. So you folks properly pass through this money and I think it's gonna have a pretty good impact. It's certainly gonna make folks put people on a more firm footing than they have been and. It was very noteworthy that most of the awards were ten, ten thousand dollars. And again, it wasn't because I was an easy grader, it was because the devastation was many times that for many folks, so. So it was easy to get to that figure. Anyway, thank you, I will keep you.
Thank you.
Yes. There were two that no longer lived in town or operated their business in town. There were two that didn't meet the terms necessary to be satisfied in the contract, okay. I think that's it, I think it's fine. Is. Another one of the awardees tonight we thought was not going to participate.
Right, but they submitted the information that showed that they easily met the requirement.
Anything else for George?
But I'm glad you're gonna do that final report, because I'm gonna be honest with myself. I had to drive around town and look at some of the businesses because I never heard of them before because I never. Had reason to know they existed, but it was a shock to see how many people are out there in small businesses that I were aware of. So that was an eye opener and the devastation and the loss are reading some of the documents on. The ten thousand dollars is a nice gesture, but it's not going to help some of them to recover fully.
Some of them is gonna keep them in business though.
Yes, they kept a lot of them in business, absolutely.
And as people come into the office to drop these off, the gratitude is so heartfelt and so genuine, so it's a it's the right thing for us to do. The next thing, not to keep them waiting, and George, thank you again. So you all remember at our last meeting, we had talked about the RFP for the radio consultant and you asked for more information. So the full RFP response is in your packet and I've also asked Bill Freeman from the police department, who is managing the project, to join us this evening. Mr. Freeman, are you, are you there?
I am here.
Thank you for being with us and I'm sorry to keep you waiting, I'm hustling as quick as I can.
You're doing great, thank you.
So Bill, could you give us kind of an overview on what the company, what you think the company is going to do for us and kind of a thirty thousand foot of what the the other applicant would have done in comparison?
I mean, they they both do pretty much the same thing, they analyze our existing radio system to determine where we need to move forward. This particular consultant that I wanna go with. They just presented a much better package, a little bit more spelled out what they're going to do. And I think they're a good fit for our town.
Have you worked with them before?
I have not worked with them before.
And based on the RFP response, do you, what do you think the. Protection afforded the town is by going with this company to do the analysis versus making a decision on our own?
I I mean, I think that. This particular company, like I said, they they spell out exactly what they're gonna do. The other person who responded to the RFP, they they gave us a pretty generic description of what they do for services rendered. So, and doing a little bit of background research on the two companies, I found a little bit of a hiccup with the other vendor in another town where he got into a little bit of a. A disagreement with the selectmen's office there.
We don't want that. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Bill?
I think the the packet that was applying, we mentioned offline challenge.
And the award, I think, the award document is in there and it's already been reviewed by Paul and Colin. Any other questions for Bill? You're getting off easy, Mr. Freeman, I'm I'm sorry to to drag you here for two minutes, but I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, if you have any more questions, feel free, just let me know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So can we have a motion to accept the RFP recognition for communications design consultants firm?
Make a motion that we accept. The consulting service agreement between Tom and East Winter and Communication Design Consulting LLC that we hunted.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Uh, next up.
Do you wanna screenshot?
We'll screenshot it later and turn it into like, you know. Uh, next up is a review and a discussion of the recommended recommended. Parks and Recreation Master Plans, some sort of good solicitation. Mrs. Maltese, Mr. Sauerhoff, are you wanna join us? So, uh, thank you for doing the labor in in terms of putting this together, this is something that the town editor, that the board had approved through. A loss of appropriation at the end of the last fiscal year, something that I think we all agree is long overdue. So that we're able to start making some progress on some of those long overdue things, really from my estimation, very gratifying. Can you tell us a bit about the recommendation that's in front of us and why we should go with this company?
Sure, so we received six applicants for the RFQ that we did put out. And we've chosen as a recommendation to the board to go with the beta group. They have been used by a number of. Parks and Recreation Departments in Connecticut as well as in New England. And are housed here in Connecticut, which for accessibility is huge for us. Being able to meet with them in person and not just over the phone or via email. And having them within our parks and and actually onsite within twenty minutes. Is something that I I'm definitely interested in. The references that they provided to us, I've called three of them and everyone has spoken very highly of them. I I talked with one planner, Tom Planner, that used them and they've actually just awarded another contract to them for a second phase of a project. So they were very happy with their work, they actually sent me a copy of the master plan that they did. And it was very thorough down to even where the placement of sign should be within parks for eye eye accessibility and just handicap accessibility. So they're very thorough in in what they do. Within their confines of price. They were, as you could see from the bids, the lowest bid, but that wasn't the normal, the just the deciding factor for us, just their accessibility and. Being able to turn this around in a timeframe where if we get the master plan completed and potentially have shovel ready projects, we could start them in spring before we start opening parks and playgrounds. So.
Questions or comments for Melissa?
So if we were to go with this one, the timeframe of when the study would would begin?
So we would, we would need to award the contract to them and then there they can start. Right away, so we're hoping to have. Meeting sessions and community sessions before the holidays and have a final number by January, final plan by January.
And I saw that they have a good, which looks to me to be a pretty good public outreach approach too. Which took a couple of courses and stuff when I was at school and that's an important component of making sure you have a holistic document that's appreciated by the whole community, so. I was impressed with these, with these folks.
Well, a question I probably should ask. When you do the study, are they gonna look at doing some things for the elderly? A lot of recreation departments and I'll take a look at, you know, the water and things like that and oversize claims for. Those that you're gonna be looking at those types of things for us.
Uh, so we're going to be able to have public input on all of the steps of the process and I think we are an advantage by having myself being in the three roles that I do. Play here. And being able to go to my focus groups and coffee hours at the senior center and getting their input right along the way as well will be key to that.
Now, understand, this is just. This, this is a concept, this is they're gonna do all this, put it together and say, this is what the community wants. Then after that, the next step is plans and all that, so this is just basically giving us. You know, what the community's looking for in our parks versus us just trying to figure out what the community wants. And they're right in weather's field. You know. Make sure everybody understands, we're not digging in January.
No, 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 this is, this is the, this is a living document that we can draw from, you know, for years to come. It it's not gonna just be be done in January and completed in April, it's not gonna be done in January, put on a shelf, it's gotta be, you know, just like the POCB, it's gotta be, sure.
It just gives us a better roadmap of where we could be going, where we should be going, where should we be allocating funding. Um, it also allows us to apply for grants because we have those plans in place. And there is a a step-by-step process that you need to to apply for some of these grants that we'd like to go after.
Sir?
I know that I said this when we did the loss of fund vote and I actually did not support the master plan just because. We had spent so much money to remove trees there, we have put up a van shell, we have slash pad and I kind of feel like. We should have done a plan originally, it's my biggest concern is what if they don't like the placing of certain things? So we're going to be like redoing things that we've already spent money on. I mean, I am in favor of our parks growing, I I love having the concerts there. And I just wanted to say, you know, I feel like we maybe should have done a plan originally before we started making changes there.
Well, we, the funding hadn't been approved, nobody would give us the money to do it.
No, I understand, I just, I'm just thinking from some concerns that I've heard from residents. Just stating that, but I know that, I mean, the money was approved and we do have this and I mean, I will support it tonight, I think it is a step in the right direction, I just. Wanted to express concerns I've heard from residents.
But they're not only gonna be looking at the river, but they're gonna be looking at all of our parks in town, which need to be looked at.
I agree.
Charlie, I didn't, I have nothing new to add. Uh, then I asked for a motion to accept the the recommended recommended bid.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommended bid to the town of East Winter and the data group.
There a second? I'll second it. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, carries hands.
Could we just ask one more, if you need a motion to go into a contract? With the beta group.
No, that was, the motion was to accept the RFP, that's, you want us to move to?
We have a contract.
Oh, you have a contract?
We already have, yeah, we have a, an RQ contract that you can prove, so. We'd just like to really get it rolling. I mean, you can review it, it's just long as your board gives you authorization, I can go get some copies if everybody wants a copy. It's a RFP contract we've used in the past, so.
I'm, this is. Yeah. RQ, request for qualification. RFQ, request for qualification. Oh, that's it, right there, in the file.
Sorry. I tried to use the postage machine, it was updating, so maybe the copy is updating.
Thank you. Yeah, there's really are.
My kitchen area I have to use.
Yeah, me too. I have to remember what that meant.
Well, that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah.
I'll move to authorize first selection to sign a contract for, um, between the town of East Windsor and, um, big, uh, group incorporated.
There a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're opposed?
Oh, I was just, I'm sorry, not opposed.
Just wait to sign, until we get beta in here and get signed together.
Oh, we have to sign it together?
Well, unless you want to sign it first.
I'll have it in my office tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Uh, next, nine B, uh, to discuss and reestablish the BMX skate, uh, skate park committee. Um, Mrs. Crockett, would you like to explain your involvement and what the committee has thought over time? And why should be, kind of reconstitute?
Sure. Um, you need to stand up or am I okay here?
Wherever you're comfortable.
I'd like to stay here. Honestly, I should know the year ingrained in my head and body and heart, but it was over ten years ago. We established this as a community with a down. And have raised the funds that, um, have resulted in the park as it currently sits, which is approximately, um, I'm, I'm doing this off the top of my head. Uh, approximately seventy to eighty thousand dollars. That we raised to create and clear the land to, um, the contractors that we ended up hiring after, did request for proposals for the asphalt, um, purchasing the equipment, which is designed to be modular, modular, where you can not onto it and move it. Um, and it's taken several years, as you can tell, to raise the funds to do all that. Um, now we have approximately twelve thousand dollars in our account with the town through our fundraisers to purchase more equipment. And we have a proposal from the American Rand Company, what they would like to propose that we do with that money for now, so that we can just keep adding to it and make it a little more interesting. And then they also gave us a, an estimate of the completion of the ultimate park, which don't get scared about this, but it's like another hundred and eleven thousand. For the par, our sons and all these people designed way back when we established. So now, um, we're beefing this excitement and energy back up because during COVID, we discovered that, um, our park was like one of the only ones around that was accessible, where people were riding it, um, using it, were expressing how thankful they were that there was one anywhere that they could still do their sport. Um, and it kind of got us like pumped up again to start rejuvenating all the, the energy to go into this park and see it, see it completed. So we have, um, several people within South Windsor. Um, and I know they're not residents, but they want to, they want to help us. We have several people from Unfield with fat traps. It's a sporting company, I don't know if you're familiar with it, among that all. Um, who are very excited to like embark on this whole thing with us, even from afar, whatever way they can legally or, you know, um, the town approves that they participate. But, um, so now you see in the list, it's me, my husband, my nineteen-year-old daughter, um, Lori Gabriel, only because all the other people that we want to pull in are not residents. So we just need a little bit more time to fill the, the town requirement. I think we need one more member. We have enough people now to fill the chair, the vice chair, the secretary and one member. We need one more member, according to Melissa LeBelle. And, um, so we're here tonight to have we established as a committee so that we can move on, just start, start fundraising again and twenty twenty for us, obviously, because we couldn't do, um, the two biggest fundraising events that we do that helped us earn all this money over the years. Um, and I'm a little bit, um, kind of behind the ball that I did not apply for one of the nonprofits that I just recently discovered. I thought it was just for small businesses and I wish I had. Um, but we're committed to scheduling the meetings, having the meetings, inviting the public, trying to re-entertain and excite in us and just get the power.
You guys are, you guys are five oh one two three?
We, we, we are within, we're under the town's five oh one two three. So our budget falls within the town of East Windsor's treasures, they have a bucket for us within.
It's a non, non-general fund, fund, um, just like we do for the dog park and.
So, that's where we stand now. I didn't, I don't, not make, I didn't make, I didn't need to make this like a plea for, you know.
It's good, it's good explanation because none of us were selecting when, um, this was constituted initially. So, um, actually Alan might have, but he's not here this evening.
I could talk for days about, I just, the passion and the energy, um, the charges that we met before the board of selectmen in lands and wetlands, planning, zoning, you can imagine. Um, just to get the space identified where it was going to be highly physical. Um, we wanted it that way because we don't want any wrongdoings going on, like tucked away behind the woods. Um, so we had that burn there that we were trying to secure a little bit of privacy. Um, so it was, it's been a long, um, a long process, um, an incredibly, you know, educational one. Not just for us, but for our children through the years. I'm going on generation number two of youth who have been involved, girls felt, we planted hundreds of plants there, saw donations all over, uh, from all different businesses within town. Spent an entire weekend planting plants there, which of course now are overgrown. Um, so we're trying to just reignite the whole thing. Um, we in no way ever intend to abandon it. So we'd like to see a complete, because that, there's two alternatives here. And we want to complete it.
Well, it's encouraging to hear that you have future plans still to, to be accomplished there. And I think the timing winds up well for reconstituting your committee with what, um, the Parks Department is doing with a, a holistic master plan for parks, parks in general. Um, so, I thank you for stepping forward.
Yes, and I, now that after hearing on Melissa, which the, the reservoir is unbelievable. I, I told her like personally, it's just unbelievable how, how nice it is with the water and just the splash pad, the van shell. Um, but in hearing this tonight, so maybe this is a discussion for another time, but I'd like to see if there's a way that, is this park included in that? Since it doesn't like, it's not like we signed off and handed it back over. We're not done, you know, we're not done raising the funds, we're not done, um, wanting to see that ultimate park happen. Um, we have, are currently sending us a huge display again so that we can start putting those at our fundraisers to show where we want to be with this park. So we kind of like re-ignited all that enthusiasm about it. Um, so I kind, I wanted to know, is this park included in that whole?
Yeah, well, the, the parks, and I'll, Melissa will joke and speak to this, but my understanding is the parks are, the is going to speak to all town parks. So that, that is a town park, it's, it's kind of the property. Um, my understanding would be, or my expectation would be, it would be included in that management. Um, it's not designated as, as like Gears Park or, um, Prospect Soul Park. It's not, it's not designated in that way, but it is to me, town property that is used for recreation and that's what the intentions. And I saw Melissa nodding her head pretty vigorously in the affirmative there.
Okay. All right, um, I'd be happy to give you any information or background you want. I don't want to take up this small meeting, but, um, I have a file like you cannot believe.
I would believe it.
Yeah.
Just seven members based on what's in the packet, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it does the math, but we're reconstituting it so we can change that threshold. However, seven members gives them, with four gives them a four, so it can actually function.
So are, are you suggesting that we do go back to the seven? Which I will have no problem doing, it kind of keeps me in advance to get back out there and pull in some new people.
Seven's, seven's a pretty standard number. And also, given that you have four applicants for the position, it allows for you guys to start doing things while you're looking for those last three. Um, and as I noted, I don't think there's any issue with minority representation. So you're fine to go at the seven number with the four that you have set forward once we do our jobs.
Okay, and do they need to be, they do need to be, uh, resident, is that correct?
Yep.
And do they have to be a voting, like registered to vote?
Yes.
Like a fifteen-year-old that is going to be in this.
Sorry.
Okay.
Got, got to be registered.
All right, no problem.
I, I reached out to someone who would be perfect for this. He, he's actually my age, but is still like a BMX pro. He has been ever since high school.
Really?
And he's still, to this day, rides a BMX bike and I've seen him over in the park, using the park.
And who, who is it?
David Kripinski.
I'm going to write that down, or well, actually, yeah, let me get that name. Don't worry, I'm not going to. If you actually.
I've already reached out to him and asked.
Perfect, and I can give you my name and number.
I have.
Perfect, I would love, I would love.
Or have him get in touch with you.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Because when they break up, these three non-voting advisors, one land use advisor, one parking record advisor, one board collection advisor. Um, non-voting advisors, doesn't look like anyone was ever creative back in two thousand eighteen. Is that what it means, is there?
Well, it's helpful for them in terms of what they're planning is to be working with somebody like Melissa, somebody like Joe, um, a representative from, from the board selection so that Brenda and her team don't go down a pathway that we can't actually have them do for whatever reason, whether it be some risk liability or, um, you know, for whatever reason, we don't want them working on something.
So those are the non-voting advisors, those, those three people.
I drew those out as examples, but they would have those criteria. Those two have nothing to do, so, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the parks.
I got your back.
And it's almost winter with fights.
Do we have a charge for them that we do, or can we just say we must re-establish?
It's in, it's in the motions, uh, it's in your back of their ninety. To continue their current purpose of creating and fundraising for the BMX state park. So, so the motion found on page eight would be instead of to establish, to re-establish and then basically the rest by law.
So I'll entertain a motion to establish the BMX eight board committee as a temporary committee for the next eighteen months to continue their current purpose of creating and fundraising for the BMX skate park, all the current members, no.
Right. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, thank you.
In the voice, I think you should have gotten mail today or.
I did.
Did you see the, um, greater, uh, to get the community to come seek an applicant?
No, I didn't, I'm going to get, but it's on my counter.
Yeah, review that, you might.
I will.
Take a look at it.
Tell, tell them that you do qualify for that.
Thank you, I will.
So now we need to take from the table, agenda items seven, C one through four.
Move to, very much, appoint.
Brenda, you're from it.
I move to appoint.
We're going to appoint you now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You don't have to say it, no.
I'll move to appoint Brenda Crockett, Dave Crockett, Rebecca Crockett and Lori Gabriel, all as regular members to the BMX skate park committee for terms expiring March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you ladies very much, congratulations and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Taxer, okay. Okay, so, we use a company called Taxer Collections. Taxer Capital Services LLC, um, to help us collect, to link with motor vehicle taxes. We don't pay anything for this service. This is something that, that historically has been done by state marshals with diminishing returns. Um, when Patty came in and converted this over to, um, th- this company before us tonight, which we got is Taxer Capital Services. Um, they do the collections, they by statute charge a fifteen percent surcharge to anybody who's going with motor vehicle taxes. They collect, Patty does one file upload and then several hundred thousand dollars comes in to the town after, after they've done that work. Um, so the contract had expired and, and we are extending it for, uh, one additional year. We have three, three one-year extensions available over the contract. So just as a point of reference, in the last fiscal year, we collected a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. A year prior to that, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. And a year prior to that, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, so this is, it's free to us to have this company go and, and do these collections that are going to happen that is worth it.
So it's not enough incentive for people to lose their registration at motor vehicles to?
You don't use it, you don't lose it, you just can't register.
Right, right. So that many people are letting, and then not, either not getting. So that many people are letting, and then not, either not getting caught or not driving that registration ever again?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Okay, and you can see it's happening every year.
But now there's a legal notice that was put out, um, within the paper the other day, um. Requesting that anyone that has any personal property in I E vehicles that aren't registered has to be reported to town.
It's like the Texas law. So this is, this is to me a no brainer, so i- if there's that objection from the board, I'd ask, uh, for a motion to approve the one-year extension and to authorize me to sign it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
P.
Uh, thank. So this is, um, actually, and Helen Tots, our assessor is with us if we have any questions. Um, so what Helen is asking us to do, I just put my contract in here, is, um. Use a third-party service to help do some of the assessment work, the field assessment work. I'll just, um, so Helen, you want to talk to us a little bit about, since you're here and I don't mean to put you on the spot. Um, but do you want to talk to us a bit about, um, how this works, why it's in the town's interest, why it's necessary this particular year?
Um, sure, as you may know, we are once again looking for an assistant assessor. Um, we had filled a position, uh, she has moved down to other fields. Um, and we're now entering into the grant list period. Uh, the grant list is based on October first of the year. As a result, real estate permits, any building permits that have been taken out. Um, we need to go out and physically inspect the buildings, we need to measure list. Um, and then data entry, all the information on additions, stacks, new buildings, that type of thing. Um, that's just one little small piece of our grant list work. Uh, hiring Mr. Barbara, whose contract we have there tonight. Would take care of the actual physical measuring listing of the buildings. Uh, otherwise I would have to be out there climbing over the building sites trying to do it. In addition to picking up slack of not having a deputy assessor, um, helping out in the office. So I've worked with Mr. LaBarber and several times, several towns, he's come to my rescue. Um, these are the standard rates he's offering to do the work at. Um, he hasn't changed these rates in, I'd say, eight or nine years easily. So they, they're very, um, very reasonable. We're down to about a hundred and twenty-five actual permit visits that we need to have done from when we originally discussed. The hundred and seventy-one. Uh, finance board last night did approve five thousand dollars being moved from my selfie account. Into the consultant account to cover his fees. But in order to get a grant list and get it all on through construction that's going on out in town, um, this is really the best way to go.
Thank you, Helen, questions or comments for Helen?
Just, just because this is the first time I'm seeing, seeing this, um, and some questions popped into my mind. You can't get that information off the phone, documents?
No, the documents are generated from the assessor records. Um, we physically take copies of the building permits, uh, the plans. And then we go out to the buildings, take a measuring tape, measure to make sure that they are actually what the original plans said they were going to be.
That's not checked by the town before they give the.
They check.
So what do you call that?
Yeah, the C of all, this. They check for the technical things like the plumbing's incorrectly, the electrical is okay. Um.
They don't do dimensions.
They don't measure, they don't look at the quality of construction, the style of building. Um, all the information that goes into my records to create value for properties.
They won't help you?
Yeah, yep. We actually physically go out, measure list, measuring tape, take pictures.
Just a little measure and wheel.
Yeah, I don't like that.
That's, that's the old school.
But anyway, just the lack of, of personnel in the office is causing the issue.
Any other questions or comments?
There's going to be two copies.
Yeah, I wouldn't sign it.
I guess I'll make a motion, um, that we enter an agreement, um, with. The town of East Windsor, Southern Wright Street, Robert, Connecticut, with, uh, Lawrence G. LaBarbara.
Is there a second?
Authorize the first left thing to sign, um.
Is there a second? Nathan seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Thank you for hanging, Helen, I appreciate it. Okay, this is a just move paper meeting. Um, so the town clerk, uh, on an annual basis applies for a grant to the state to do various, various types of maintenance, maintenance and upgrades in the town parks office. Um, she is submitting this grant in front of you to help digitize, uh, certain records. Um, land records are on, um, online going back to nineteen seventy-seven and the goal of this is to get those to go back to nineteen seventy-four. Um, so this is an annual thing that we apply for, it was used. Joe, the thing that, um, Joanne had going on at the annex, what, what were they doing there? Was that digitization too?
Actually, it's, um. Purging a whole document and.
All the record retention stuff, that's right, that's right, that's right. Um, you guys might be surprised Lawrence got a package. Um, but anyways, so what we're trying to do is get more, uh, services available in the digital platform. Yeah. This, this would be a motion to authorize me to submit.
Make a motion to authorize the first amendment to submit the application for the target grant.
Thanks.
Um, for the historic documentation preservation program, um, for the twenty twenty-two, and you're not, not to.
No, it's not requested.
Not requested, the amount requested of thousand one hundred.
Seventy-five.
Not amount, or is it fifty-five hundred?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred?
Yeah, fifty-five hundred. Write that motion.
No second.
Thank you, have that cleared up, do you want to read that back?
Um, to authorize, we select to submit the application for the whoever grant for the time for two thousand twenty-two. And email requests.
And the, the grant is the historic preservation program targeted grant for fiscal year twenty-two. Historic documents preservation program targeted grant.
I said, isn't that what it said?
Yeah, it was.
That's right, it's hard with this mask on.
Uh, favor, aye, opposed? Or are we now capital improvement policy, asset policy discussion, okay, so. Um, the, this conversation came up at the capital improvements meeting. Last week, I guess, and they asked for clarification as to whether projects less, uh, projects containing components less than twenty thousand dollars. Can be bundled together and approved accordingly, so I asked finance director Amy O'Toole, who was a CPA. Um, to do a review and a recommendation of, uh, the policy and the practice, and that's what, um, did I give you guys this memo?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so you have an opportunity to see what, what her professional opinion is, the past practice has been, um, that we are, we allow that. I think that that's a practice that should continue. Um, easiest example would be, we just did a, a number of laptop replacements for the police department. Obviously no laptop requiring purchase is going to be twenty thousand dollars, but laptops in the aggregate, um, for a department would cross that threshold, so. That kind of brings it into clarity. So I would like, uh, the board, my recommendation to the board would be to affirm, um, that the practice of bundling projects. Uh, is acknowledged and, and allowed. As has been, it's always. I'll say fifteen. Now, but twenty, uh, it's got, the, the projects have to be in, in the aggregate twenty thousand dollars. To be capitalized, and Amy puts in place what those schedules are, um, in her memo.
So this, if this is approved, this is.
No, no, this, this is an affirmation of the terms of this.
Okay. And this will be attached to this?
Yes, and it'll be sent to share with the, um.
I'll make a motion that we accept. The attached capital expenditure explanation sheet dated September sixteen, twenty twenty-one as it relates to the capital improvement plan policy. Specifically, um, the bundling of groups, um, that's stated. That's the big picture.
And he, is there a second? Dave and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? So affirmed, thank you folks. Okay, the next one has no, um, documentation with it, um, but is, is not, is it? No, we lost it. Okay, so, um, years ago, uh, there were a pair of telephone poles in the parking lot, uh, just south of this building where you could actually hang banners for different events that were going on in town. Veterans Commission used it, Abby Sullivan-Haines used it. Um, and then we did the project where we expanded parking because the parking situation was dire. Um, so as part of that expansion, one of the poles had to come down. Uh, so the Veterans Commission has talked to I B E W and has, uh, got them to agree to replace that at no cost to the town. Uh, which is actually pretty nice. Um, but I wanted to make it word where because it has, it has an impact on town property. My understanding is that, uh, Mr. Philipone has had conversations with Joe about what the needs there would be in terms of spacing and setbacks and, and the like, so that. Um, it's an opportunity for us to replace something that we had while still having improvements, uh, that the parking brought to us. And wanted you guys to be aware of it, there's no action that needs to be taken at least at this point in time. Um, but if somebody's starting to post hole, they have a question, ask them, well, I didn't know what was going on and why.
Did you, did you just fill in a poll without any electrical or anything to it?
Yep, and it's free.
Free is always good.
Um, they're, they're installing specifically for the purposes of being able to hang between two poles.
There's only like six brands.
Yeah, actually, the one across the street with the light on, you see how that fee costs us thirteen thousand, so. I B E W has proven to be a very good community partner, they, they have done a lot of. Yeah, they're right next to the S, SBS building.
Okay.
Um, they've done a lot of work at Tralons at no charge to them, um, so they have been very good corporate citizens. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that because that's something that's going to be happening, if there's, if there's any type of official action that the board needs to take, I'll bring it here. Yeah. Mobile forty-five, I think.
Like the end on its bone.
No, he, he was in before.
That is it.
It is it.
He couldn't get that down.
You probably. Yeah, you like that it's.
Sorry, I keep muting you, Ed, I thought you were on before and we lost you. Good talk. Okay, um. Tax refunds.
I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand nine hundred and one dollar and forty-four cents.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, um, agenda item nine, aye, uh, discussion of the letter to the Connecticut City Council, what is happening there?
So, oh, something hit it yet that it's just got even a bunch of windows? Oh my.
You kind of closed it.
Oh no, it's like, it opens like twenty of them.
Um.
You always have trouble with that.
Yeah, me and technology, we're, we're the, uh, so, um, after the last conversation or the last meeting that we met jointly with Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we talked about two things, we talked about the, the town's, uh. Approach towards deciding marijuana developments or not, what we were going to do with that. We also talked about the citing of additional grid scale solar developments. Um, the consensus out of that conversation was that the town would send a letter to the signing council, um, expressing the sentiments that I think are included in this letter here. Um, I did some research to, you know, kind of beef up the argument about our overall contribution towards the state's. Like what generation, which is surprisingly high, uh, Eastones are going to be responsible for twenty-five percent of the state's renewable energy or grid scale solar energy. Um, that, that's not inclusive of all renewables, but. Um, so bottom line is, we're, we're saying respectfully to the signing council, um, we've done our part, we recognize the state's goals, we agree with the state's goals, but there's other opportunities in other parts of the state. Um, we also want to keep in mind that, that one of the state's other policies, which is the preservation of open space and farmland. Um, and those two well-meaning policies are, are sometimes in conflict with each other, so kindly, no more here. Um, that's the gist of what the letter says, uh, it was reviewed, a change or amendment by the Planning and Zoning Commission the other night. Um, I wanted to get it out the door as quickly as I could, so I had the draft shared with them first, because otherwise it would have been until like October fourteenth or something before. Um, we would have been able to get this off to the signing council. But if there are any changes or corrections, I, I entertain those, uh, otherwise we'll pick this one up.
I see, on the first sentence, board of selectmen, it should have an E instead of an A.
I do know all the time. Thank you.
That's like.
Awesome, now we know who did the banner.
Yep. Every time I, I write either of those words, I do it the wrong way, I have to fix it, so thank you for that. Any other corrections?
Um, I thought over town dumps. It says one hundred king over rooftops, highway needs are over, uh, convenient gravel pits. They can have any dump anymore, there's only two in town, one of them's already got, oh.
Uh, Winstonville's already got it, yeah. The other one. I'm happy with excluding that, okay. I'll, I'll explain to you why. Okay, so can I have a, a motion to adopt the, uh, draft letter to be sent from the board of selectmen and the planning and zoning commission?
Hope to adopt the draft letter between the first segment and the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to the. Citing council regarding solar.
There a second? Second motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. I will get that off to the signing council sometime next week, once I get permission to go over the signature. If you said to the second one. Okay, selectmen's reports. We are actually, I'm not gonna lie, guys. Taking a very good time compared to where I thought. Now, I know. We should, since he's not here, we should volunteer for something. Okay, on September fourth, the Connecticut Trolley Museum celebrated their eighty-first anniversary within everything of these events. The family-friendly event featured trolley rides, airplane displays at Skylark Airport, fire utility trucks. Food trucks and music by Steel and Easy. I want to congratulate them on their anniversary and best of luck for a great year ahead. On Labor Day, September sixth, and I'll explain the relevance of this, but on September sixth, my son and I went to the New England Air Museum. That was the first time that I had ever been there. And I have to say, I think I had more fun than he did. I would like to have my birthday party at the New England Air Museum. It was something else. I share this because many of the people who are involved in turning the air museum into this, the clear success and amazing destination that it is. Are now working with the leadership of the Trolley Museum to do the same thing. And so I really think that they have the right people in place at the Trolley Museum to make their vision a reality. And I think that, pardon the dad joke, that didn't help it. Everyone should get on board before this train leaves the station. On September seventh, I had the opportunity to visit ICARE touchpoints to see how they've been administering care to their patients during the pandemic. I was very impressed with the measures that they've taken to keep employees and patients protected from COVID- nineteen. And with how they've adapted their delivery of service to meet the changing needs that the pandemic has presented. I would be personally very comfortable with the level of my involvement there. That same night, I attended the Economic Development Commission meeting. They could not meet due to conduct business due to lack of forum, but we did have a good conversation around local happenings. We talked about the progress made on the Erase Grant, which we all finalized this evening. And about future networking opportunities with development groups, including Metro Hartford Alliance. As of last Selectman's meeting, as you all know, we had approved one hundred and three awardees for grants through the Erase Grant from a wide range of business interests. I'll be working with the consultation team to prepare a final report for our meeting on October twenty first. On September eighth, the town hosted an employee appreciation lunch at the park. This was a small opportunity to say thank you to our staff who have dutifully shown up to work to meet the public's needs throughout the pandemic. We have a great group of dedicated people who work for the town, and I extend my thanks to them. Later that same evening, I was invited to attend an organizational behavior graduate class at the Westfield State University. Over the course of this current semester, I'll be working with graduate students to do an assessment of the town's land use departments, including. Building, planning, public works, local health, and WPCA to examine three things. Opportunities to streamline processes and experiences for constituents. Efficiencies available among and between departments and resources available to realize those efficiencies. It's my hope that this graduate level analysis will provide some insight for experiential improvements for our residents and for anyone who's looking to do business in the town of East Windsor. When working with the Connecticut State Government, the next legislative session is always just around the corner. And September ninth, as I do regularly, I attended CCM's Legislative Committee meeting to discuss statutory changes that would make service delivery better at the local level. We are, I truly think fortunate to be represented in a bipartisan fashion by legislators in our community. To advocate for statutory changes that we request, and as we did at the beginning of last legislative session, but working through CCM is a way of amplifying that voice of heart. So today I had the opportunity and the good fortune to arrange a bus tour for the town of East Windsor with representatives of Metro Hartford Alliance. An organization that works to bring economic development to north central Connecticut. We spent two hours seeing developable and redevelopable, redevelopable properties in town. This is another effort to make sure that East Windsor is kind of front of mind when decision makers are looking to to make decisions about where their businesses are going to be. Thanks to Town Planner Ruth Calabrese and planning consultant Mike Tomato for their help in pulling the tour together, and to EDC Chair Dill Hayes for joining us today. There are two notable events this weekend. First, it is the Four Town Fair. And East Windsor, as you all know, is the host community. We all will be participating in the parade at ten AM on. Saturday morning, but also later that same day. At from two to four, the Warehouse Point Fire Commission will be dedicating the newly constructed firehouse expansion. At the Bridge Street Station, naming it after longtime firefighter, beloved community figure Tony D. DeMastro Tobio. Summer camp has wound down for the season. This year's participation exceeded that from two thousand and nineteen, which is fantastic. The round numbers, our camp program fees took in thirty nine thousand dollars and gate fees took in an additional twenty eight thousand. The splash pad was a big part of that success due to consistently heavy rains closing the waterfront. Lastly, there are job opportunities in the town of East Windsor. We are currently hiring for an assistant assessor. A part-time social services administrative assistant and a senior center nutrition site manager. We will also shortly be looking for a new assistant town planner after Ruth Calabrese was promoted to the director of planning. And additionally, there is a critical shortage of school bus drivers both locally and in the state. So anyone who's interested in that should reach out to Smith Bus Company. Lastly, please join me in welcoming our newest DPW employee, Sean Zern, who started with the DPW group this week. That's what I have. Great.
I'm much shorter than Jason.
Sorry.
Parking Recreation Commission met on September fourteenth at Town Hall Annex. Discussion that took place regarding the financial account review, the unit reports September first, twenty twenty one, show that they are in line with anticipated expenses and revenue for this time of year. It was noted that due to forward storms, the council this year pavilion rentals have gone down, waterfront closed for two weeks. Enclosures and staff are resulting in less revenue compared to two thousand and nineteen, last year that the park was open. Upcoming programs were discussed, such as the haunted highway held on October twenty eighth. The Healthy Kids Funding Series, I believe, started this past Sunday. Soccer shops and the scarecrow contest, a contest with a few. There are few results of the master plan that at six bits, he's been to vote to award his weapon for reviewing award, which happened this evening. Schools will be available for after-school program. CIP requests were submitted. For playground replacement event, every soccer lights and a gator to name a few. East Windsor Housing Authority met on September fifteenth. The closing on thirteen Reservoir Avenue took place and they're currently in the process of putting on. On Facebook, the furniture and stuff that was left, if anybody wants it, under the free page for the town. The installation of solar panels on a community hall has started. The gazebles have been erected and you're currently working on putting in the. Digging the holes today, put in the.
Right, it's just pairs. Pair, not great pairs.
Thank you, concrete pairs, so that they can have grand go down and expect it, so this way they can play. And there's three of those going up landing section. The top to shower conversions will be starting as soon as the material is available. Originally, they were going to piece now and do. Eight or nine, and then wait to grasp more money, but the town was able to get some more grant.
I gotta tell you, the, the team at the Housing Authority is on fire right now. They are killing. So that's a really, in person, you can see they're doing a great job. Sarah.
Hey, on September eighth, the Board of Education held a lengthy regular meeting. High School Principal Allison Anderson and Assistant Principal Barbara Kaminsky gave the board a school report from the high school. Focusing on equity, social emotional learning and evidence-based practice. And the themes for the high school this year are planning, persistence and pride. There are no changes on the reentry since the last meeting, as superintendents across Connecticut are waiting on the state for updated guidance and timelines pertaining to COVID nineteen. As the ones that have been provided are starting to get outdated and have yet to be updated. Prior to the pandemic, twenty six students were being homeschooled, and currently the school district has fifty nine students being homeschooled. A curriculum report was given by Darryl Luliard, and state assessments for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year show that student growth suffered during the pandemic. Business Manager Andy Puckett gave a financial report, and the school district has a remaining balance of twenty three thousand one forty six. From the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, going back to the town. Of which fifteen thousand dollars could go into the school district's two percent fund pending the completion of the audit. Throughout the next few weeks, the schools will be offering a combination of virtual and in-person outdoor meet and greets with teachers. I believe this past Tuesday was the high school, followed by the middle school next Tuesday and elementary school the following week. The board went into executive session following their meeting, and when the board came out, they unanimously voted to name Darryl Luliard the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And to name Deidra Stunk, PhD Director of Special Education. On September ninth, I attended the Veterans Commission meeting. The commission is completing their organization of the upcoming twenty first annual. East Windsor Veterans Day five K road race, which will be held rain or shine on Saturday, November sixth. The race starts at ten AM from the town hall, and registration is now open, and you can find the form on the town's website. Online registration should be available soon. Ages up to seventeen years of age are ten dollars, and ages eighteen on up are fifteen dollars through November fifth. And will be eighteen dollars on race day. The first two hundred people registered will receive a T-shirt. The commission is seeking businesses who wish to sponsor the race. That form can also be found on the town's website. Proceeds from this event help purchase flags for our servicemen and women's graves on Memorial Day. Help, help assist in funding scholarships for two high school seniors annually. And help contribute to veterans and towns' needs through the work of our service officer. The deadline for the paper drive is September thirtieth, and the cost per paper is fifty dollars. If you are interested in a six by nine engraved paper in memory of a loved one. That will be displayed at the Joseph Tracy Memorial Green. Please contact a Veterans Commission member or myself, and I can put you in touch with the appropriate party. On September thirteenth, the Warehouse Point Fire Commissioners held their monthly meeting, one week later than usual due to Labor Day. Fire District Treasurer D. James Barton reported that the grand list went down, which will bring in eighteen thousand six hundred dollars less in taxes to the Warehouse Point Fire District. There were seventy eight fire calls in August and fifty three fire inspections conducted. Through the efforts of Chief James Barton, the Fire District was awarded the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. In the amount of two hundred and thirty three thousand. Then a bunch of threes, three, 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 to fund Scott Airpods, which are self-contained breathing apparatus. The district needs to contribute five percent to receive these funds. Warehouse Point Fire District, I'm sorry, Fire Department Auxiliary will hold their mom sale fundraiser this weekend. From nine AM to four PM on Saturday and Sunday at Station One, and Jason already mentioned the dedication and ribbon cutting in honor of Tony D. And then on last night, September fifteenth, the Board of Finance held their regular meeting. Finance Director Amy O'Toole reported that both the town side and Board of Education's books are reconciled through June thirtieth. And departments are returning roughly four hundred thousand dollars to the general fund, closing out the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty one fiscal year. And the board officially appointed Bill Sign to the clerical negotiation. That's all that I have, and that's it.
Oh, so we're going now to Charlie.
Yep, on September eighth, I attended Police Commission meeting. The Police Department has started a new online traffic portal. Here residents can file complaints about traffic issues they see and would like to bring to the attention of the Police Department. The address for that is east windsorpb.net. Police discuss their agendas for this year's capital improvement projects. The Police Department is currently behind on purchasing vehicles. So they will be pushing for that within CIP, and the department will also be looking to expand the locker room space for female police officers. Because they are currently out of space for adding new females to the force with six currently among the ranks. The chief and deputy chief applied for and won a grant from the federal government, an amount of thirty five thousand dollars. They will be using this grant to jumpstart the mental health program that is behind getting implemented due to a shortage of officers. On September ninth, I attended the first PTO meeting of the school year. New Superintendent Dr. Coon was presented, introduced himself and offered support to the PTO. PTO discussed and planned events for the upcoming year and how they would raise funds to help the elementary and middle school. Anyone looking to join the PTO and or help volunteer can contact myself. Or go to the PTO Facebook page and message the organization. On September thirteenth, I attended Warehouse Point Fire. Sarah already commented on that. On September fourteenth, I attended the Planning and Zoning meeting, as did the rest of this board. I was shocked and upset by the level of insults and accusations made during the meeting. And afterwards on social media, disrespectful comments came from both the general public and applicants in front of the board applying for sewing changes. I would remind everyone that with the exception of Jason, Ruth Ann Calabrese, Amy O'Toole, and Mike Damato. That everyone who serves on town boards and commissions are town residents and volunteers. You do live in town. These hardworking volunteers live in town and have stepped up to make a difference. Volunteerism is hard to come by these days. And when people see others behave in this manner, it just makes it all that much harder to fill positions. I'm appalled that people accuse members of giving special treatment to applicants. All boards and commissioners are sworn by oath to follow the town charter. Rules, bylaws, state statute, and state laws that apply to the subject at hand. The Planning and Zoning Commission. Is following those rules and regulations and the order in which they are handled. If a developer, whether a town resident or otherwise, wishes to build their land. And has followed the rules and regulations of both the town and state, then they have the right to do so. Concerns about potential issues are always well heard when people are respectful, genuine, and the issues are brought up at the proper place and time. Please be kind to our town volunteers. They are residents just like you and I. They are human and give their time to make East Windsor a better place. And lastly, I would like to congratulate. Captain Mark Morrell on his recent retirement in the Warehouse Point Fire Department after serving forty five years.
That's all I, all right. We are now on public participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. Are there any members of the public here present who would like to address the board's selection? Are there any members online who would like to address the board's selection? Please unmute yourself, turn your camera on, and identify yourself by name and address.
I don't know how to work my camera, but it's Jennifer Abbey, thirty two Race Road, and I just want to say. Thank you for all of the board and commission members, because I know how much sacrifice it takes to. Get these things voluntarily. So I just wanted to say thank you.
That's very nice. Thank you very much. Any other public comment from anybody attending the meeting online? Okay, we will go into executive session to discuss contracts. May I have a motion, please, to include the town engineer?
Move, we go into the executive session to include Glenn Norton, town engineer.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, no. As we're going into executive session at eight thirty PM, I do expect that there will be one vote when we come out. I'll get you the details as soon as I have.
Works in the town of East Windsor.
For a second.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. All right, so we'll now take up agenda item nine J. We have before you a copy of a contract between the town of East Windsor and Glenn Norton, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. And I also would take a motion to sign a clean copy. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Said that I think Glenn does a great job. He's always somebody who is willing. I said that I think Len does a great job, he's always somebody who's willing to step up for whatever he's asked to do, and I'm glad to keep him on for another few years. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Contract is approved. Is there any further business to come before the board is selected?
Move to adjourn our regular meeting at nine oh seven PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seven minutes, it's non-debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? We are adjourned at nine oh seven PM.